To the November 13th regular business meeting of the Richland II School Board of Trustees. I apologize that we're late. We're usually pretty good about being timely, but we're here at the end of the day for students, and so when we have a student matter that takes a little bit longer, we have to take the time and care with that student as we would anyone else. So I apologize that we're here late. At this time, we are returning from executive session where we discussed student appeal, just one, and we didn't quite get the student admission request of the district's adult education program. We're going to have to go to a second executive session to do that. And at this time, we will move into item three, specifically item 3.1, our inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Manning.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. It's my honor today to recognize the Honor Platoon from the 282nd Army Band. Madam Chair, this was in honor of our Veterans Day. Certainly, we recognize our veterans and our military and have a lot of pride in this district around that. Mr. Plank, before he departed, actually set this up and left some regards. He set this up months ago. So I'm actually going to read his remarks because I think I couldn't do any better than what he said, and in honor of the work that he did to set this up. So Mr. Plank says, "Growing up, some of my fondest memories were standing on the tarmac as my father's squadron returned from deployment and along TDI. The sounds of the jets and the joy of the families will remain lodged in my memory in perpetuity. Monday, a week ago, I attended the Come Meet Your Army Night Tour at Fort Jackson, and as I stood there at the night infiltration course training exercise, I watched the youth of our country, each cloaked in the uniform of a warrior, crawling with live rounds flying overhead, each volunteering to grind through the weeks of the uphill climb to become Army Strong, and each submitting to their dedicated leaders, and I was quickly reminded of that oh-so-beautiful sound, the sound of freedom. To the patriot, the sound soaks into his core and affirms the deep pride he has for this great land and the freedom our military defends. So on this Veterans Day, to those who have served our country, we are so proud of you and your families, and we thank you for your dedication to excellence and to the protection of our freedom." At this time, please stand, and we will say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now have our national anthem. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hail as the twilight lasts gleaming Whose broad stripes hadn't bright stars throw the perilous fight? Oh, the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming And our kids' red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, do that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? We can give him a hand on the way out.
Thank you, Mr. Manning, and just, yeah, I appreciate your sharing Mr. Plank's comments. We've been trying to work our way through the whole board with inspirational moment, and his rotation was weeks ago, and he wanted to wait until the day because the Veterans Day had meant something to him. So we appreciate that. Now, we will move to item 4.1, approval of our current agenda. If we could receive a motion at this time.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Elkins Johnson.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the current agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. It's been moved and properly seconded, and at this time, we will cast our votes if there's no discussion. It did. It's there. By a vote of seven to zero, our current agenda has been unanimously accepted. Before we move on to item 5.1, special recognitions, whenever we have elected officials here who have been elected by the people to serve the community, we'd like to acknowledge them. And Representative Howard, because I'm short, I didn't see you still in the back. If you stand and acknowledge, if you stand to be acknowledged, thank you for being here with us this evening. Thank you. Thank you for being with us this evening. And now, we'll move on to item 5.1, special recognitions. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, we have come before us this evening, Ms. Libby Ruth, to provide us information regarding special recognitions. Ms. Ruth.
Thank you, Dr. Davis, and to the board for this time where we highlight examples of what Dr. Davis talks a lot about, which is our students having a platform to display their gifts and talents. And while they won't actually be displaying them here tonight, I think it's another opportunity for us to hear about them, which is so great. And we're going to start with Kendall Wallace from Westwood High School and bring up his athletic director, Jason Powell, to help us in recognizing Kendall. Now, this is a dream come true for you golfers out there, and you're going to be drooling, I promise you. Kendall was one of just two golfers from South Carolina selected to compete in the 2018 Pure Insurance Championship, which is an official PGA Tour Champions event in Pebble Beach, California. Kendall, who was a senior, has been a member of First Tee since he was eight years old. First Tee introduces young people to the sport of golf, positively impacting their lives with its nine core values. He is a member of the Westwood High School golf team and has been named the team's MVP and Male Newcomer Athlete of the Year. The Pure Insurance Championship is the only event of its kind in which 81 junior golfers from First Tee are teamed with 81 PGA Tour champions. Kendall was paired with Golf Hall of Fame legend Hale Irwin and finished in fourth place, shooting 15-under for the three-day event. To say we are proud is a little bit of an understatement, but we certainly are. Congratulations. And Kendall, I know quite a few people who may try to hit you up for golf lessons before you leave tonight. All right, now I'm going to bring up a group of students from our R2I2 Student Innovation Center. If they'll come forward, as I call their name. Kaye Brown, who is also a student at Ridgeview High. Andrea Serta, who is a student at Blythewood High as well as R2I2. Ronnie Fowler, also from Blythewood High School. Omar Herrera from Richland Northeast. Murray McDaniel from Spring Valley. Nathan Saravanan Pandian from Spring Valley. Anaya Thompson from Blythewood. And two students, Jeremiah Lynch and Leila Thompson, could not be with us. I'd also like to call up the teachers and the mentors that work with them, Kirsten Bullington and Robin Jones, as well as the director at R2I2, Kevin Albersi. So let me tell you about this amazing group up here. Be prepared to be wowed. So they are a team that was named a 2018-2019 Invent Team by Lemelson MIT Programs. The teams receive up to $10,000. Yes, please unroll the banner. It's very exciting, very official. They received $10,000 in grant funding to solve a problem. Now, here's what the R2I2 team is doing. It's pretty amazing. They are working on a solar power system for a school in Senegal which lacks power. The R2I2 Invent Team are inventing a system of interlocking solar bioenergy devices to provide enough power for a photocopier. The system will snap together and be made from inexpensive and sustainable materials so the students in Senegal can assemble, replicate, and repair it. The Lemelson MIT Program looks for programs that inspire young people to invent technological solutions to real-world problems. Team members apply their learnings and experiences to build an invention that will be showcased at Eureka Fest at MIT next summer. Now, it might not surprise you that the teacher of our next Energy Engineering class, who heads up this program, Kirsten Bullington, is a top innovator herself, and she was recently recognized by ITology and received the TM Floyd Innovator Award, and that was during the 2018 ITology Innovation Challenge. Ms. Bullington won the top prize by showing how her students use technology in three different ways. They collaborate internationally, they collect and analyze data, and create prototypes for their own energy solutions. Congratulations to these top premier innovators. And while Ms. Morris is getting the position, I'm going to take this one real quick. One, two, three. One, two, three. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Manning, I'm going to get you to sit. Please, keep smiling. We'll see lots of people taking pictures. Ready, one, two, three. Stay there, one, two, three.
Anybody else? Hold on. Paparazzi. Let's congratulate them again. Now, I'd like to ask Shayna Manuel and her, who's an art teacher at Round Top Elementary, and her principal, Janine Tucker, to please come forward. Thousands of people enter their art in the South Carolina State Fair each year, but only a small handful of people win. You can just look at the picture on the screen and see why Ms. Manuel's artwork won first place in the Drawing on Paper Professional category. They say a picture is worth a thousand words, and yours just speaks volumes. That right there is an example of the talent and the passion and the gifts that our teachers have and then pour into their students, and then keep that gift and talent and still can display it for others. It's just amazing. So we congratulate you.
Ms. Ruth, before you take your pictures, I see the assistant principal out there, too. We'd love to have the assistant principal join in for the photo.
Congratulations. Teamwork makes the dream work. And finally, tonight, we'd like to call up a group of professionals, some from our district and some from outside agencies, that make up what we call the Boom Program. And I'll explain that in a minute, but let me bring them on up, because we just like saying the word boom without anybody knowing what it means. Sarah Park from Blythewood High School. Joan Yakobi from our Instructional Support Services. And then our community members are Stan Beckley from Building Occupational Opportunities of the Midlands. Vince Earls from Midlands Tech. Stacy Lever with South Carolina Vocational Rehabilitation. And Samantha Turner from MIBA. Along with Richland II and these community partners, representatives from Richland I and Lexington V formed this group, which stands for Building Occupational Opportunities in the Midlands. And this program has won two top state honors from South Carolina Association for Higher Continuing Education. They won the 2018 Continuing Education Cooperative Program and the Outstanding Program of the Year. The Boom Program is a course at Midlands Tech for transition students from different schools across the district to teach them basic construction skills. Rather than earn a traditional diploma, they earn a certificate from Midlands Technical College. Since the course offerings earlier this year, several students have since been employed by the building industry, which is the ultimate goal. Instead of just finding a job, they are finding a career and a passion and a talent. Thank you for creating this program and for the heart and the love that you pour into our students. We are so blessed. Thank you. Congratulations. That's it. That's it. We'll take a quick break and let them slip out. Our students have homework to get to.
We'll give them just a second to clear out. At this time, we'll move on to item six, specifically Arkansas Agenda, and we'll accept a motion to approve the same at this time.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning.
I make a motion, a motion, a motion to approve the consent agenda for November 13th, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. Dr. Caution Parker, thank you. Is there any discussion at this time?
Madam Chair, did we go over the consent agenda during executive session?
Executive session was just the student appeals and the student appeal. The executive session, the consent agenda didn't have anything to do with the executive session. It was just the student appeals. For the consent, executive session was just the student appeals. The consent agenda is not an executive session. Is that what you're asking clarification for? It's not an executive session item. Is there any further discussion with regard to the consent agenda? If not, we'll cast our votes at this time. Has everyone been able to cast their vote? No? By a vote of six to one, the motion carries to accept Arkansas Agenda. At this time, we'll move on to item 7.1, School Focus. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, for our School Focus, we have Ms. Janine Tucker, principal of Round Top Elementary. We'll share information about the school's fifth-grade leadership class. Ms. Tucker.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for this privilege tonight, Dr. Davis. It's especially nice to be here on a night when we start by honoring our veterans, who are special, of course, to all of us. And I'm proud to say that my youngest son has found a pathway to purpose in the U.S. Army and enlisted just this last summer and is currently serving at Fort Lee, Virginia, in AIT. So it's an exciting time for our family. That's right. Go Army. Army Strong. So it's my pleasure to introduce our wonderful school counselor, who's going to talk to you about the leadership program that we do at Round Top Elementary. That does set us apart from other schools, of course, that have leadership involved in every elementary school. Before we do that, I just want to mention, too, that it's so nice to come to the board meetings and see students that are recognized. Anaya Thompson, who is here with the innovation team, is a former aviator, and once an aviator, always an aviator. And Tori Brown is going to be part of our presentation tonight, and she's a seventh grader at Blythewood Middle School. So we love to follow our students. So I'm going to turn it over now to Ms. Sandy Tanner, our school counselor.
Thank you, Mrs. Tucker. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board, and Dr. Davis. My name is Sandy Tanner. I'm the school counselor at Round Top Elementary School. It is my honor to have been asked to share about a program unique to our school called Leadership Block. Because the program is largely student-led, I've prepared and submitted an informational video that will share with you what our students actually do. So it'll kind of give you an idea of what it looks like and sounds like when our children are participating in the Leadership Block program. I hope I can get this to work. And when we are done with the video... In the spirit of Richland District II's mission statement that students participate in meaningful and engaging learning experiences, Round Top Elementary students in the fifth grade have a unique opportunity to apply life skills in the Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. The Leadership Block serves as an additional related arts class and is aligned with our Leader in Me framework, as well as our vision to empower, lead, and succeed. As part of the Leadership Block, each fifth-grade student is assigned to a classroom in kindergarten, first, or second grade. During the Leadership Block rotation, these students assist in their assigned classrooms. They may be asked to read to younger students, listen to students read to them, model appropriate behaviors, encourage students, assist with classroom games and learning activities, and assist the teacher with other organizational tasks. Before fifth-grade students participate in Leadership Block, they receive training during classroom guidance lessons regarding expectations and procedures. Within this framework, leaders of leaders are selected by their homeroom teachers to manage the logistics of their program. Called seekers and watchers, these positions are filled by students to coordinate the logistics of transitioning each class to their assigned areas and to assist with time management. The students learn that the overall goal is to extend what they've learned about leadership skills by experiencing what those skills actually look like, sound like, and feel like in a real-world setting. Leadership Block also provides a safe environment to take appropriate risks, sometimes fail, and try again using perseverance and effort. Students are asked to reflect on their experiences and make connections to how they've grown as individuals, students, and leaders. Part of this reflection involves the collection of data to measure the impact of this experience on students' academic, social, emotional, and career-related goals and interests. Based on student feedback, the Leadership Block experience has enhanced the ability of students to utilize perspective, initiative, cooperation, and resourcefulness, all characteristics of global citizens. And I'd also like to take an opportunity to introduce Ms. Tori Brown. She is a Round Top Elementary alumni member, and she is going to share just a little bit about her own experience in the program.
Good evening. My name is Tori Brown, and I currently attend Blythewood Middle School. I participated in Leadership Block at Round Top when I was in the fifth grade. The Leadership Block helped me to take on challenges. I was challenged when I took on the responsibility of making my own lesson to teach in the kindergarten class that I was assigned to assist with during leadership. I found out about a week before I was going to do my lesson that I would be teaching while we had the advanced ed visitors at Round Top that day. This challenged me to do my best I could. That way, Round Top could have the best review they could. The leadership experience helped me develop as a student because it showed me that people have different types of learning styles and learn at different speeds. After having this chance and being able to teach my own lesson, I was able to realize I would like to be an elementary teacher. The Leadership Block taught me to think globally because I was able to think about others' learning styles and needs. My most memorable and meaningful moment was getting to teach my lesson. This was memorable because it showed the kids I taught that they could also do these things when they get older. This was also memorable because I got to teach my lesson in front of my kindergarten teacher, and this allowed me to show her how far I've come. The leadership program at Round Top is beneficial to both the leader and the younger student. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your presentation. We appreciate all the information you shared. The most meaningful thing to me is that you want to be a teacher. Bless you. Questions or comments from board members at this time? If not, thank you for your presentation. We appreciate it. At this time, we will move on to item 8.1, Public Participation. At this time, the people who have signed up to address the board can do so at this time. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, and I just want to reiterate that student privacy means everything to us. So when you're speaking, the reason that when we discuss student matters, we refer to them as student A, B, or C, or 1, 2, 3, is because student privacy is important to us. So when you are speaking, please refrain from identifying a certain student or teacher or school, if you could. The first person we have signed up to speak to us is Veronica Reynolds. Is she here? I think she may have left. Okay. Ms. Kewana Davis? Yes, ma'am. The microphone is already on, so just adjust it to whatever height you need.
Hey, good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
I might be the loudest one in here because I have a hearing disability. I wish that the topic at hand is the most pleasant topic, but I came because I have some concerns. As a preschool, I'm going to say that again, as a preschool educator, children's growth starts from home, but from preschool. You understand what I'm saying? So, as a preschool educator, the job and the duty that I had the privilege and the honor to share has been great. I have taught from two major churches in this community for over eight years. One of the pastor's wives, she was out in the lobby a few moments ago before the meeting started. My heart hurts so bad tonight. I am trying so hard to refrain from the tears from which have developed over time. As a parent and as a human, we stood here and we gave a pledge of allegiance to this flag. Under God and one nation, under God, we supposed to, supposed to, nothing is perfect on this earth, but every day is a... every day is a day to renew yourselves. My two children have suffered in this district, but they have a mother that did not look at skin, that did not look at disability. I have taught children with cerebral palsy, Down Syndrome, different special needs, and not one time did my heart say anything different per child. I have dived, died like a baseball player on the floor, on the ground, to catch a baby head that could have got a concussion in the palm of my hand. Thank God I got there in time. He moved my feet, no matter how much I hear, okay, not hear. He equipped my ears to tune out things I don't need to hear. But my ability and performance and love made me get on that floor and dive, like I was diving into safety for somebody else's child. Now, in the event, my mother, when I was eight years old, she had a stroke that paralyzed the whole right side of her body. So at eight years old, in elementary school, I had to teach my mother all over again, her name, her address, phone number, everything, everything that she taught and gave me. And I'm not trying to take too much time, but I have to come and express this. I have been refraining for years to come in here because the things that my children come home and the love that I give to the community's kids is heartfelt. My son was a student in the community at one of the local schools, and I'm going to say local school. And he came home to me upset. I'm a short person. He's about this tall. He came home and he said, "Mom, I was walking to class and an administrator called me shorty." And he said, I ignored him. I kept going. He said, he was so trying to get attention to my child, he walked up to him and tapped him on the shoulder and turned him around, turned my child's body around. He was offended. So I got on the phone, I called to the school, and I said, "Y'all got two minutes, two minutes to get the principal on the phone immediately." And it was only because my child deserved an apology. This was years ago. I'm going to move a little forward to the current event as to the reason that I'm here.
Yeah, we're going to have to get you to wrap up. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. I read the paper. It said 15 minutes. I'm trying to speed it up a little bit.
Three minutes, but we're...
Three minutes. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Three minutes.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Well, my daughter, I'm going to skip past my son because he about to graduate this year. My daughter was in a fight at school two, three weeks ago. She was shot in the eye with a BB gun as I was nannying professionally to somebody else's family. Now, over these years, she has been striving to continue and be in class with everybody else's kid. Now, the only thing that I asked was that my child be treated like everybody else. As an early educator, I taught 3-year-old children, 4-year-old kids, and it's very precious. If I can give an assessment for, in two days, with 25 students, it makes no sense to me as to why my child was not, before this fight occurred, it took three days before the fight occurred. The second day, five children sitting at a table, out of five kids, only two children got a meeting with the staff. So if, if the staff had questioned and took their job precisely and serious, as can be, and in a timely manner, my child is the child that will go tell, oh, something happened because she can't get no impact to her eye.
I've got you. We're letting you try to finish up your thoughts, so we've gone five minutes. What I want, what I want you to do, though, is let a staff, let a staff member to follow up with you. We can't respond to people who come before us, but we can get in a staff member to follow up with you. If that'd be okay.
The problem, what I see, the only thing, I made a meeting because at this meeting at school where I tried to handle this at, I only asked for an apology because, for one, if my child had been one out of those five kids that were supposed to be investigated, it wouldn't have been no fight. So now that it was a fight, she was fighting a child twice her size. She had to protect herself. So therefore, if the appropriate procedures was administered, the fight wouldn't have happened. What if she would have got hit in her eye all over again? You see what I'm saying?
I see exactly.
So all I asked was for that staff to apologize to my child.
I got you.
Before that, a teacher in her foreign language class called her the bad child. She, a new student, came to the classroom and said, "Where's she supposed to sit at? You new to the school, you want to sit somewhere in, you know, wherever you want to sit." It was room in the front. My child sat in the front.
I got you, Ms. Davis. I don't mean to cut you off, but we've got to, we're letting, we're giving everybody the respect of three minutes. We're going to have a staff member...
I respect that, Ms. Amelia McKee. I really do. I really do. But when I have to, I just, I see my uniform, I just delivered packages to the community's family, not teaching, delivering packages for other children and other families to get their food, medication, Christmas toys. My birthday, Christmas Day, I feel very special and honored to deliver to these families so their kids can have a smile on their face. But what I do not appreciate is the only simple thing I asked, the only simple thing that I asked was for an apology. He took pride in calling me the very next week after I told him specifically, "This is going to create a domino effect for my child." Now, the domino effect, because when you is in a situation, other kids, they put it on Instagram, Facebook, and all this. So it's spread all around the school. Now, the week that this happened, my child was waiting to hear information because she wanted to run for secretary of her school. When the teacher said, "Don't sit by the bad child," and announced it in front of the whole class, that made her feel like, well, why I'm going to run for secretary of the school.
Ms. Davis, Ms. Davis, we've, we've, Ms., okay. Ms. Davis, Ms. Davis, hear me out for just one minute. Ms. Davis, Ms. Davis, let me...
Okay, well, I just wanted to say...
No, 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 listen to me. Hear me out. We're going to help you. I'm not being dismissive. When we ask for people to speak for three, hold on, I'm not, I'm not going to blow you off at all. That's not what I'm doing. When we ask for people to speak for three minutes, we have a lot of people signed up, so we try to give them a courtesy of three minutes. And we went over and gave you five or six. We're not blowing you off at all. I appreciate you coming here, and we've got a staff member right now who's going to help you. We're not blowing you off at all. Mr. Smith is going to help you right now. Okay?
Well, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
But what I wanted to say last...
Yes, ma'am.
Is if y'all want to make South Carolina great, vote for prayer back in the school system.
Thank you, Ms. Davis, for taking the time to come here.
Everybody pray.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for coming here.
All nationalities can pray together. Mr. Smith, who are the difference?
I got you. Thank you for coming here, Ms. Davis. Mr. Smith, thank you so much. The next person we have to address the board this evening is Dr. Helen Derpinghaus, and I apologize if I mispronounced your name. Is that right? Derpinghaus? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, and good evening. I'm Dr. Helen Derpinghaus, proud parent of a Richland 2 elementary, middle, and high school graduate. I'm here tonight with a few others from the Midlands Organized Response for Equity and Justice, or MORE Justice, along with some allies from the Black Parents Association. MORE Justice is an interfaith coalition of 31 diverse congregations dedicated to our collective mandate to do justice and address serious community-wide problems. This past year, we collectively voted to work on education and mental health and turned out over 1,300 people to our annual Nehemiah Action to hear responses from our public servants around proven best practices. Richland 2 School District did not have one official respond to the community's questions at the Nehemiah Action. This coming year, we will turn out 1,700 people to continue our work in education, and the Nehemiah Action Assembly will be on Monday, May 6th, at 7:00 PM at Brooklyn Baptist. Please consider this as an official invitation to each and every one of you. Keeping students in class is the first step toward academic achievement. We remain steadfast in our commitment to address issues of discipline that prevent class attendance. Recent Richland 2 data show that in-school suspensions have decreased significantly. That's great. We're confused and disappointed that out-of-school suspensions continue to rise and expulsions have nearly doubled. At our Community Problems Assembly this week, 500 of us signed cards for you around discipline and urged more transparency from the district. The card is addressed to Dr. Davis and Ms. Mackey and reads as follows: "We know that our students and teachers are very important to you and that you want to ensure that Richland 2 is one of the best school districts in the country. We want the same thing. We ask you to meet with MORE Justice by the middle of December to share additional discipline data and to discuss the implementation of PBIS and other best practices to better support our hard-working teachers, address student behavior, and keep kids in the classroom. We will be in touch in the coming week to schedule that time together." I'll bring these cards up in just a moment. "We know there are proven best practices out there like PBIS that work to address discipline, attendance, and academic excellence. We continue to expect our public servants to respond to their constituents." Dr. Davis and Ms. Mackey, we will be reaching out. Thank you all.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Carolyn Brock.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, I relinquish my time to Ms. Cecile Johnson. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Cecile Johnson, you are up next.
Good evening, Board members.
Good evening.
Staff, parents, and students of Richland 2. My name is Cecile Johnson, and I'm a human rights defender with the American Institute of Human Rights, and I'm a recent transplant to South Carolina, and I have one child in Richland 2. I'm concerned about the students' academic achievement and what Richland 2 is doing to close the academic gap between Black and white students and to raise the achievement level for all students in the district. I'm concerned that the school district is attempting to cover up its lack of achievement of Black students in its data. On page 5 of your 2017-2018 Student Handbook, there's a chart. And under that chart, test scores, it shows South Carolina ready unless the percentage of students scoring approaches, meets, or exceeds in the 3rd to 8th grade level. Using this standard, the district is able to claim that its students in those grade levels are South Carolina ready and are performing from 73% to 76%, 73.6% to 78.6% in English Language Arts, and Language Arts, and 64.2% to 80.5% in Math. However, this is very misleading. As the Richland School District 2 Student Performance Data Document clearly says in paragraph 2 on the first page, that all students in grades 3 to 5 are ready to take the South Carolina ready, except those who qualify for the South Carolina National Center and State Collaborative, I'm going to skip. And it says the performance levels are, does not meet expectations, approaches, that's the second one, meets expectations, that's the third, and exceeds expectations, that's the fourth. It says, "For the purpose of this Student Performance Data Document, students who score meets expectations and exceeds expectations are considered proficient." So, those approaching are not proficient. Yet, in your Student Handbook, the data that you gave makes you look real good. Now, it took me a while, and I had to create a chart, right? And in that chart, I had to list what you had listed, add up all the numbers, and then figure out who was really proficient. And there's like a 30-point gap. That's not good. So the question is, why was that done? You know? And the next thing is, on a national level, and even on the South Carolina state level, Black students are performing in 4th grade in South Carolina, 15% are reading, are proficient in the 4th grade, and 13% are proficient in math. When it comes to the 8th grade, 12% are proficient in reading and 8% are proficient in math. And yet, they get to high school and mysteriously graduate, right? Most nationwide, 75% graduation rate for Black students. It's not logical. It's not logical. So, what I would like to know is, what is the district going to be doing about closing the academic achievement gap between Blacks and Whites, and it's about a 30-point gap, and what actions will you be taking? Because we would like to see all children get an opportunity to succeed. And I'd also like to say that Richland 2 has three times a suspension and expulsion for Black youth, usually boys, from 2005 to 2015, something that the person who spoke before talked about. And I think that some of this low academic achievement is contributing to the discipline problems. Because if you don't know how to read and write, you get to high school and the teacher's speaking at high school level, and you're not there, then you shouldn't be. So I would like the district to look at its policy. Social promotion doesn't help anyone. At the end of the day, we get students who are not ready for society, and they're not ready for our community, and we need them to be ready. And we also don't need for our population to be increasingly going off to jail because the children get frustrated in high school because they're not ready. I'd like the district to look at its policies and see what it can do for the students. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, thank you for taking the time to address us this evening. Thank you. Next, signed up is Ashley Brock. Okay, Darius Vogel. Okay, Mr. Mustafa.
Madam Chairman, Board Members, equity, fairness, and accountability are going to be my subject today. Equity, fairness, and accountability of our tax dollars when it comes down to student achievement. This is what we, the community, wants and demands for our tax dollars. We want the unfair suspension and expulsion to stop from K-12, from K to 12. You have first offenses that go straight to the alternative school. We want that to stop. We want you to stop violating families and students' civil rights and constitutional rights, due process, illegal searches. We want diplomas in the district, not certificates. How many, how many here wants a child to get a certificate? 12 years in school, but you're okay for them to get a certificate? We're not okay with that. Our tax dollars demand a diploma. We want every child in the correct level of grade. If they're in the 3rd grade, they should be able to read on the 3rd grade level. That's not happening in Richland 2. We want our Black boys to stop being exploitive when it comes down to athletic, if you will, sports. We praise them in sports, but we neglect them in academic. That's a serious problem here. You make money off of them there, but when it comes down to academic, you don't care. We have a major problem with that. We want teacher representation. Your district is 70-plus percent of African-American, but yet, though, you have 80-something percent of white teachers, whether it be guidance counselors, whether it be psychologists, curriculum coach. Guidance counselors are very critically important, as we well know. They guide our children to careers. But how can they get a career if the district has set up the school-to-the-prison pipeline going on? Your data speaks for itself. Alternative schools, it's a serious issue. Your alternative school, what's the purpose of your alternative school? What is the purpose? I went there the other day with the family and low behold, 90-something percent of African boys. It makes me sick on the stomach and make the community sick on the stomach. Why? And then I go and investigate a little bit. First offenses, that's a major problem. We want our tax dollars to educate, not incarcerate. We want a goal for students' achievement. We want a real goal, not lip service, but we want a real goal for students' achievement. Board members, you guys are the leaders. And most of you have been on the board for a while. No more lip service. No more lip service. IEP, special ed, we'd again want the exploitation to stop. What did I say by exploitation with special ed and IEP? From K-1 to 12th grade, most of the children is in special education. IEP, the district gets from $8,000 to $10,000 additional dollars each year for that child to sit in special education. That money's supposed to go to their child to help their child to get on the proper reading level, or whatever the case may be. Where's this money going at? Where's it going at? Where is this money going? For a child to be in special ed and you guys receive additional $10,000, $8,000 to $10,000, and that child get to 9th grade and 10th grade... ten thousand dollars, and that child get to ninth grade and 10th grade, and you say, give him an occupational certificate instead of a high school diploma, what can that child do? We want that to stop. We want a community contract with the school district. We want the school-to-the-prison pipeline to stop. There's a memo circulating that came from the district office saying that no teachers can support any students that's been suspended or expelled, exposure, unfollowed exposure. Why? When you guys do your investigation, you don't get any kind of information from teachers? How do you investigate? What are you doing? What are you doing? No investigation from the teachers. You're sending letters out? You best not send any letters to support a student for being suspended or expelled. Why? You guys don't even inquire with parents about kids. Don't even inquire with parents. You label them as gang members, this and that, and we have students that's in the community doing things. What are you guys doing here? Code of Conduct violation. District have violated, again, as I said, Civil Rights Act, Constitution Act, and one of the things that my organization and other organizations is proposing, that parents from this day forward, when they do lawsuits, you put the principal in there, teachers and everybody involved, including the board members, that continue to do and exploit our children. Bullying, you got a bullying problem. You have a serious bullying problem. But yet, though, we talk about security, talk about security. What about the security of children being bullied? What about the security of the future of our children for certificates? How can they go on with their life in the community when they can't even read or write? You guys should have the assistance. No more lip service. Our tax dollars demand that every student succeed and be a productive citizen. This is a major issue nationally, major issue on a national level, when it comes down to our Black boys, our Black kids, period. And for this district to have predominant African-Americans, and our kids can't relate to them, and the students can't relate to them, don't we realize that's probably some of the referrals and school-to-the-prison pipeline? There's no more lip service. It's about accountability. And I can assure you guys, we're going to get a contract, and we're going to hold you accountable because the day is over. It's about our children. When I was in Africa many years ago, when I visited a village, I stayed in a village. I didn't stay in a hotel, Holiday Inn. I stayed in a village. And in that village, the greetings was, "How are the children?" That was the greeting, Madam Chairman. "How are the children? How are the children?" You guys have a school-to-the-prison pipeline set up. Our children's not fine, and we demand our tax dollars.
Mr. Mustafa, thank you for taking the time to address us this evening. Next, we have signed up Craig Conwell.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman.
Good evening, Mr. Conwell.
Good evening to the board and Ms. Dr. Teresa Holmes on your newly-appointed position. We appreciate all of you for being here today. You all have a very awesome responsibility. There's this old adage that says, "Justice is the law that distinguishes between right and wrong. Justice is a principle of fair dealing, one with the other." That is what we expect from you all, to do justice for yourselves, your students, and your teachers. You've heard from many today about the school-to-the-prison pipeline and other measurements and data that the citizens feel that you're not meeting. But you have an awesome opportunity now with this new administration, and some of you were re-elected by the citizens, to show and prove that you are, in fact, want to be the number-one school district in the state and one of the best in the country. That honor is on you all because the citizens are awakening, and they desire to see accountability, not just for the school board, but for all political leaders. And we desire to hold ourselves accountable as well to make sure that the principles of justice and fairness is adequately pushed forward for all of the citizens of this district. So, I implore you all to use your best thinking caps, to work together to solve the problems that affect this district, to look at the data closely and try to reduce the ninety percent, from what I understand, of Black students in the alternative schools, the eighty percent, as I understand, maybe my figures are wrong because you have the data, of Black students who are being pushed to be expelled that come before you. So, we have a total inequity, a total imbalance. And if you don't do something about that, then the kind voices that are coming before you will become angrier and angrier because justice is in the nature of every human being. And when people feel that their children are not receiving justice, then that is the greatest angering force that could cause people to erupt. So, I implore you all to take your awesome responsibility and be accountable with it and to listen attentively to the parents and the citizens that come before you and to take into consideration all the extenuating circumstances by which you have to judge and judge accordingly. And let's make this district, with your help and ours, in partnership, the best that we can possibly be. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Conwell. And thank you, everyone who's in the audience tonight. I never want to cut anyone off right in the middle of a sentence. Usually, we have a three-minute limit. I know Mr. Mustafa had some folks wave some time to him, but I never want to cut anyone off in the middle of a statement. I try to give them an opportunity to finish their thoughts. So, thank you for your patience tonight, as we heard from the public. I know before I got on the school board, I was a parent who used to come to the school board and share my concerns. So, thank you for your, for your patience, as we heard from the public tonight. We appreciate it. Next, we're moving on to item 9.1, Legislative Update. Mr. Shad.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing that we have at this point, there are some study committees that the General Assembly have created and are going to create that should be of note. They are looking at the school climate and how it impacts our students statewide, the positive and the negative. And they are also, there's also one in the, that's in the House. There's also one in the Senate where they are looking at the impact of, it's the Taxation Subcommittee, looking at the impact of Act 388. And some threw in possibly looking at some sales tax exemptions as well to see if they hopefully can loosen some of those up so that we can have more funding for our students. That's our report.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. We always include our Legislative Update when we have school board meetings because not only do we get funding from the state legislature, but a lot of the decisions that are made there directly or indirectly affect us. So, we always try to include that in our school board agenda so that we can be abreast of decisions that are being made at the State House that affect us directly. So, thank you, Mr. Shad.
And may I add, sometimes those mandates are unfunded.
He has added that sometimes those mandates are unfunded. Yes, you may. Moving on to item 10, Voting on Executive Session Items. We didn't get to finish everything that we had to discuss in executive session tonight, so we're going to have to reconvene for a second executive session. But for the things, the decisions that we did make, we'll entertain a motion at this time.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I'm, for student number five, I move to uphold the appeal and return the student to their zoned school.
Madam Chair, I second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini, and thank you for the second. Is there any discussion at this time?
That's right.
If not, we'll cast our votes based on the motion by Mrs. Agostini and the second by Dr. Holmes. By unanimous decision, the motion is upheld. We'll finish the remainder of our student appeals and our adult education request at our second executive session. So, we'll move on at this time to Section 11, specifically item 11.1, Old Business Action Requested. At this time, we can receive a motion on policy revisions to IKF graduation requirements.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Mackey, school board members, Dr. Davis, policy, the first policy that we have up, graduation requirements. Just want to remind you, only a new section on endorsements was added by the state to recognize student areas of distinction. Under the Career Prep section, the board had a question about the wording "test" or "text." The correct wording is "text," and it is reflected in the policy along with the updated names of the test. Graphic literacy for locating information and workplace documents for reading for information.
Thank you. Can we see a motion at this time?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I move to approve policy IKF.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion? By a vote of seven to zero, the motion is unanimously carried. Item 11.2, Approval of Policy Revisions to IHAM, Health Education.
I'd only send you here was condition of liquid abuse prevention, there were no other
Can we see the motion at this time?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I move to approve policy IHAM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. The motion having been made and properly seconded, is there any discussion at this If not, those wishing to do so, please cast your votes. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion carries. Next, we have approval of policy revision IHAE, Physical Education.
What was new here is P. credit for marching band. The board previously had a question about professional development.
Is your mic on? Is your mic on?
It's not.
There we go. Thank you.
Sorry. P. credit for marching band is what is new is here. The board previously had a question about professional development to teachers in Bullet Five. This was changed to information for clarification.
Thank you. Are there any questions? If not, is there a motion at this time? I'll jump at once.
Madam Chair, I make the motion to approve the policy as submitted by the district.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Shad. The motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Shad?
Ms. Gregory, you all changed it from professional development to information. How is it going to be disseminated to the teachers?
It was not professional development or meant to be professional development. It's actually information. There is, it is not meant as formal professional development. It is the sharing of information.
How often will that occur? Which teachers are you going to send it to? How will you make sure that the teachers receive it? That's what I'm asking. Because we would normally have that in a professional development situation, but we don't have that.
Well, actually, it's ongoing and information, whether it's through Red Ribbon Week, through blogs, other information. They share it faculty meetings, but it is more informal than it is formal professional development.
Thank you.
That's why we clarified with the wording. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Are there any other questions or concerns regarding this policy? If not, we'll entertain a motion at this time. Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, it's already popped up. Yep, it's already popped up. We had discussion. It's already popped up. Please cast your votes. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion carries. And finally, policy revision to DKC, Expense Authorization Reimbursements.
Madam Chair.
I have a question.
Mr. Shad? If we can get a motion first, and then we'll have discussion. Is that okay?
I move that we, that the board approves policy revision DKC as stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Dr. Elkins Johnson?
I was trying to find what I was looking for because I did not bring my notes with me. But somewhere in this policy, I think I saw, and you guys helped me out with this, that it said for reimbursement, is that the discretion of the principal? Am I correct on that?
To the immediate supervisor.
Your immediate supervisor.
Immediate supervisor.
Yes. And I guess my question would be, that could be very biased. I would love to have seen that and would love for Mr. Shad to reconsider that that will be considered by the superintendent and not the immediate supervisor because we have different supervisors that will do different things. And that could be unfair treatment to some of our teachers and some of our employees. So, I think that should be, come back to the superintendent and not the immediate supervisor. So, I would love for you to go back and reconsider your motion because the thing about it is we have to make a motion, then we discuss it. So, we are voting on it, and I wish we could talk about it before. So, I would welcome you to consider.
The motion could fail. It's okay. This is Robert's who's a voter. It could fail. But, so what you're saying, if I can ask a question to you, Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Yes.
So, you're saying that the authorization, everyone's approval authorization should go through the superintendent? Is that what you're saying? Instead of their immediate supervisor?
The reimbursement, yes.
Is there any more discussion?
Madam Chair, I just want to get some clarification. So, this is a friendly amendment by you with regard to my motion.
I would love for you to do that.
Let me ask you, Dr. Elkins Johnson, when you say, "At the discretion of the superintendent," would you be opposed to the language, "At the discretion of the superintendent or his designee," which we've done in plenty of other policy?
Sure.
Okay.
But I just want to make sure it's fair.
Yes, ma'am.
Because the way it's worded, it can be unfairly treatment to some teachers depending on the school where they are.
Well, I will, I will accept that friendly amendment. Yes, ma'am.
Just as a, just as a point of information, every employee would have an opportunity should they decide or think that it was treated unfairly to appeal that decision at that, at that local, at that level. That's not something I'm, I'm saying is something for discussion. It's just as something to mention that they have the right to appeal.
And thank you, Dr. Davis. I appreciate that. But we all know, we've all, well, I've been a teacher, and we have teachers sitting out here, and I have some nodding at me. We know that teachers are not going to appeal because they don't want to be blackballed or have someone chasing them. So, thank you for that comment. But as a former teacher, we know teachers are not going to do that because teachers are just not that vocal like I am and was as a teacher. So, let's just do it in a way that's fair for all, and let's not put it back on the teachers because I'm a teacher at heart. Thank you.
Mr. Shad, can you restate your motion with the friendly amendment so that we're clear? Are you done, Dr. Elkins Johnson? Okay, thank you.
Ma'am, I move that we accept the...
Turn your, turn your mic on, Mr. Shad.
All right. I move that we accept the policy revision for DKC with the following change. On page one, in the second to the last sentence, it shall now read, "The requirement for an employee to reimburse the district is made at the discretion of the superintendent or his or her designee."
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there a second? Well, we've already gotten a second. Is there any more discussion?
No, that's a new motion, so I'll second that motion.
Do you want to second it?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion after the new motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning.
Just as a point of order, we can't make a new motion when we already had a first and second. If we're, I mean, it's fine if we do it as an amendment, but if we're saying it's a new motion, then we can't do a new motion. So we, I don't know how we fix that, but-
Did I understand that you were, did you, so your initial motion was on the table, and you made a friendly amendment to that original motion?
I accepted the friendly amendment from Dr. Elkins Johnson, so the motion is still there.
I got you.
There's only one motion. It's just an amended one now because I accepted the friendly amendment.
And it's been properly seconded. Is there any more discussion on that? Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there any more discussion with regard to that motion? If not, we're casting our votes. Has everyone cast their votes? By a vote of six to one, the motion carries. Next, we'll move on to Item 12, New Business, No Action Requested. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, we have before you two items with no business, I meant new business, no action requested. The policy was received, this is EBAB, was received, reviewed last on May 2018. The School Board Association had proposed minor content changes. To EBAB. Mr. Will Anderson, I'm sorry, I didn't see-
Okay. Okay.
I thought you were standing at the podium. Mr. Will Anderson, here to answer any questions.
I'm, I'm sorry, we, you've got the proposal, and there's, there's really, it is what it is. It's about being safe with hazardous materials. But any questions I can answer? And Mr. George Gooch is here as well to answer any questions.
Any questions from board members? Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Dr. Davis.
And let me just roll with it, Baron.
Yes, roll with it.
The next one, kind of same thing, is energy and environmental conservation. So it's in the spirit of making sure that we are good stewards of energy use and environmental use here in the district, and which we do, but having a policy for that. So I know they're very exciting policies, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Hearing none, if you move right along, Mr. Anderson. Thank you.
I'm done. I don't know finance, so I'll turn it over to Harry.
Thank you, sir. And now we'll move on to Item 12.3, First Quarter Financial Statement. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, we have Dr. Harry Miley will present the first quarter, 2008, 2009 financial statement. Dr. Miley.
Thank you. Good evening. As, as we frequently, we discuss these first quarter financials, it's, it's a little bit early to see any trends. As you can see from your report, for instance, we've received 13% of our total revenues for the year in the first quarter. Obviously, that's 25% of the year, but we've only received revenues equal to 13.4%. That's 13.04%. That's typical. The last five years, for example, the last five years, we've averaged 12.2% of our revenues. So we're slightly above historic five-year average, but it's right in trend with other years, and it's early. Most of our, we have some state revenues, but obviously, none of our property tax revenues from the county have been received, or very few, just a few for car taxes and things like that. So it's early. Everything is in line with previous five years. If you look at expenditures on page two, expenditures, we've spent approximately 20.4% of our budgeted annual expenditures. That's actually slightly below our five-year average. Our five-year average is 21.7% of our total budget is expended in the first quarter. Other than that, as you see, most things are in line, and I'll be glad to answer any questions. If you see the Education Improvement Act funds, we're budgeted for the year right at $22 million, just an FYI, FY 1112. We've been talking about the, the reduction in EIA funds over the last years. In FY 1112, we were receiving $26.5 million, and this year, we're receiving $21.9 million. As you can see, revenue received out of the EIA funds is just a little, almost $3 million, and we're spending about that much. But we have $19 million to be received through EIA funds for the rest of the year. Our special revenue funds and grant funds, we budgeted 25.2 million. As you can see, we've received less than a half a million of that. I think this is about the same time I mention every year at this time of the year that we, we, we have a fund balance, and one of the reasons is we spend money before we have it in some of these funds. We get, we reclaim it after expenditures and also do the timing of revenue, the receipt of revenues. That fund balance is nice to have, especially this time of the year is the driest, worst part of our year in terms of bank balances, and that fund balance helps us make payroll and other expenditures. As you can see, $25.2 million is our budget, and we hope to receive another $19.4 million. Page five is the, is the, the board accounts. Everything is in line there in terms of our expenditures to date. Page six is our outstanding capital improvement projects. There's still a little money left in the 2008 bond referendum funds. As you'll see, Lake Carolina Upper, there's about $250,000 for that. That is typical of a new school, although it's not that new now. It, we, we don't install all the IT expenditures until the school is closer to capacity. Same thing with Jackson Creek, although Jackson Creek is closer to capacity than Lake Carolina Upper. And then the Richland II, I II here, we have about $900,000 of balance at this point. We still are working on the completion of the building and will not be paying our construction company full amount of owed until we get all the punch lists completed and all the missing elements missing from the building. Other than that, I'll be glad to answer any other questions. As you know, as the year goes along, we get more, better complete picture as the year goes along with revenue pictures and expenditure pictures. But I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Dr. Miley, thank you for your presentation. Before we entertain questions, can you explain just for the, the benefit of the public, how Act 388 works and how it impacts our budget? Just because not everyone understands that, and I know Mr. Shad made reference to that earlier, but just so people understand that.
Do I have more than three minutes?
Well, you know, we've been gracious tonight.
Act 388 was passed in 2006. It exempted, fully exempted-
I got you.
-owner-occupied residences from all school operating taxes imposed by school districts. There was already a Property Tax Relief Act that passed in 1996 that exempted up the first $100,000 of owner-occupied homes, which covered about 60% of the homes in South Carolina when the pass, the bill was passed. But now, it fully extends to all owner-occupied residences, the full value. That means if somebody builds a house worth a million dollars and has four schoolchildren and they live there, they don't pay any school operating taxes to, to the district. The state originally passed a whole harmless bill that reimbursed the school districts across the state for that, for the lost property taxes from the exemption. That quickly fell behind, and that has not kept pace with growing districts like Richland II, about a half a dozen, a dozen school districts in the state as they're growing faster. That reimbursement from the state, that penny sales tax does not keep it fully funded, and we don't get fully reimbursed of the exemption that we give property tax owners. So as a homeowner, it's great. As a school district and public finance, it's not the best law that was passed. Does that help?
It helps. Just to explain that missing revenue that-
Tremendous pressure on, tremendous pressure on business owners and other owners in the district.
Yes, it's a huge pull of income that we're missing. I want to explain that. Thank you so much. Dr. Elkins Johnson, you have a question?
Yes, I have three questions. The first one is on page four, number 311, Professional Development. And my question is, is this the amount that we allocate to all of the schools? Or what funding is this? Is this just the district's office?
Page four, which one?
Remember, 311, Professional Development?
Fund 311?
Yes.
Page four, Fund 311.
It's the fourth one from the top.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. My page numbers are wrong.
Oh, that's okay.
It's not page three. Page 311, those are the funds that we get from the state for professional development. It's not all our professional development expenditures.
So you get from the state to do what? To allocate to the different schools?
To tell you the truth, I'll have to ask, yes. We distribute that to all the schools.
So is that funds that the principals can use to allow?
Yes, the principals submit a plan that's tied to their priorities, and they, they do. And it is, again, based on the number of teachers that they have.
And I guess my question would be, do the teachers have to report something to you guys? Because I have a lot of teachers that share with me the fact that a lot of times, professional development is only allocated to certain teachers in the school, and it's always the same teachers all the time going to professional development. And I know that occurred. I worked in schools before in Richland II that that occurred as well. So my question is, how do you know that they are sharing the love and the professional development throughout their school and not just recycling those favorite teachers or their buddies and friends that always get an opportunity to go to professional development? So is there something that they submit to you guys so you can see that the love is being spread throughout the school?
Yeah, I'll, I'll address that. There are two types of professional development that's taking place at the schools with this type of funds. Number one, the principal, when they submit their professional development plan, it's an overall overarching professional development plan where they may be bringing in different types of content or information where they're providing professional development to their entire staff. And so let's say if a school is going to a leader-in-me approach, they may use that professional development money for leader-in-me. If they're going to be using an Avid, they may be using money from Avid. If they're taking on seven mindsets or seven habits or some type of professional development, benchmark testing or anything like that, then they bring in those resources to use for professional development for the entire school. The second type is the type that I think you're speaking of, Dr. Elkins Johnson, where exactly a teacher may come to a student, a principal, and say, "I would like to attend a professional development that relates to X or Y." Teachers have the opportunity to attend two professional developments a year. One can be in-state, and one typically, and one can be typically out-of-state. From my experiences, it has been a challenge for some teachers, even as a principal in this district, to get them to do some of those professional development opportunities. But you do put those opportunities out there for them should they choose to do those things. However, the professional development needs to be related specifically to their content area or an area that they're desiring to receive it in that's going to help benefit the student in their classrooms. Do we have a roster of, to keep up with who has received professional development and who has not received that type of professional development? The answer to that is no. Principals aren't asked to keep a list to do that. Now, some may keep a list of who has received professional development and who may, who has not, or whether or not they've been asked, they asked the principal if they could attend or put a submission in to attend professional development and were denied. Many teachers in the district have received professional development. A lot of it is over the summer. We send quite a few teachers to different PDs over the summertime, so they're not missing instructional time for that type of professional, professional development opportunities. Particularly this past summer, I can speak specifically about the number of teachers who were at Avid in Philadelphia from Richland, from Richland II. We'd had probably, I know we had the most teachers in probably, definitely in South Carolina that were a part of that professional development opportunity. So we do not have a practice or policy in place that will necessarily say you have to keep a roster who've got, who has gotten PD that they asked for and who is not.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. And you kind of scaled it a little bit for me, and I appreciate that. But again, we do have principals who allow certain teachers, their buddies, their favorites or their friends, to take advantage of these opportunities where other teachers may even need the professional development, but not getting it because they have allowed that. So I would love for you, as the superintendent, to keep a close watch on that. If they're not submitting rosters to you guys, have conversations with teachers when you go through the buildings. I know I do. Continue to do that to make sure there is fair treatment with professional development because we know in some schools, it's not. So I'll end there and go to my next question. Page five. Number 276.
Fund 276, Capturing Kids' Hearts.
Yes. Now, I know we're not funding that for all schools, correct?
I'll have to admit, I'm not sure where these funds are going at this point. I'd have to ask my grants person who's not here tonight, but I'll get an answer for you.
Can you come to the mic for us, please? Thank you.
Good evening. Hey. The Capturing Kids' Hearts Grant is actually a grant that is overseen through the State Department of Education. And so they are doing the Capturing Kids' Hearts in several school districts that are across the state.
So basically, the funding is coming from the state, and they dictate which schools receive?
Three years ago, it was focused on the middle school level, and we asked the principals who would be interested. Summit Parkway was interested at the time, EL Wright Middle School, and now Blythewood Middle School.
And thank you for that, because that's what I wanted to hear, that you asked the principals based on who's interested. I would love to see you guys look at the data and look at the demographics of the school and just make a sound decision on what middle schools you think could truly benefit and what students can truly benefit from this. So thank you for that, because that's what I wanted to hear, that principals have an option, whether or not they-
Absolutely. And just to add to that, the State Department of Education had looked at the data before they actually called our district, was my understanding. But I'm glad that I could help.
Thank you.
And my final question is on page five, number 832. The Rule Recruitment Initiative, if you could tell me a little more about that?
Can anybody help me because I have no clue?
That is actually funding that we receive because over the last five years, our turnover has been greater than 10%. So that is funding that we're using for recruitment and retention.
Right. But if you can explain more of using it, how for recruitment and retention, and where are you selecting the teachers from?
What we're doing is we're actually doing across the district training. Each area has allocated funds for culture competency training. We're also doing a incentive for special ed teachers. So when we look at that, we're doing that as well. We're also using the funds for reimbursement to the district for international teacher fee placement cost.
So you still haven't answered my question about the recruitment piece of it. Where are you recruiting the teachers from, and how are you using the funds for recruitment?
We're using it for recruitment travel costs. So we're using it to recruit at different colleges and universities, as well as the cost that it took today to host the recruitment fair for any advertisement, anything that affiliated to the cost of hosting a recruitment fair, travel for recruitment fair, additional recruitment fair outside of what we typically would do.
And do you have any data that comes out of this recruitment that shows, for an example, that you traveled to Ohio State to recruit teachers? What was the percentage of recruitment from that college? Or you traveled to HBCUs or?
Absolutely. We actually do a recruitment plan each year, and we look at what did it provide for us in the last year. So if Ohio didn't produce, then we- So if Ohio didn't produce, then we don't go there because it's not going to bode well for us to spend our time there when we can go to another state that may have more teachers that we're able to secure to bring back here to Richland too.
And my final question, do you all have a list of some of the colleges that you guys are attending, visiting for recruitment?
Yeah, absolutely. We actually this week just attended, went to Claflin and South Carolina State for their fairs that they had, that they invited us to. But we do have a list of schools that we, we go to each year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. A quick follow-up question. Ms. Williams, you mentioned turnover at a certain percent. Just out of curiosity, I know we've had a mass wave exits with retirees. Do retirees figure into that turnover rate or?
Yes, ma'am. The TIRI program did, because most districts, it was an increased number of districts who qualified for this fund due to the TIRI program.
Okay. Thank you so much. Dr. Holmes?
Madam Chair, I have an additional question.
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned cultural competency. Exactly what are you doing with cultural competency and exactly which, who are you targeting with that?
Each school actually has a representative that they are sending. We actually have a professor from USC who's providing the training. She's a renowned artist, author, and someone who's actually written books and go across the nation. And she comes here to work with our staff. And then they will actually have a trip at the end of the completion to go to the National Civil Rights Museum in Washington, DC.
Okay, so let me understand, so only one teacher per school, one representative per school is getting the cultural competency training?
That is correct. Due to the, due to the, I mean, we have one representative and they're the trainers. They will be the trainers for each.
So you're using the train-to-train model?
That is correct.
Okay, if, is there any data on how effective that would be with cultural competency?
Absolutely. Working closely with our diversity and multicultural inclusive officer, we work closely with her to work with the data to see the need for.
Is that going to, is that data available?
Well, this, again, this is our first year receiving it. So we're gonna, we're using the data that, this is one of the things that she asked that we provide. And based on the information that we had, we thought it would be very inclusive to have every one representative from each school.
Okay, I would just venture to say that it may be more advantageous to have more than representatives since there is a vast difference in the population and the teaching population. That's just an observation.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions for Dr. Miley at this time? Mr. Shad?
Madam Chair, thank you. Dr. Miley, with the, I know you talked about Act 388, which is near and dear, not so dear to our heart. But I also wanted to at least share, if you could, share with the public, the, I ask you this about every year, the impact of the loss of funds that we do not receive from the state as it relates to their statutory promise to give to the district, but specifically to us. What, what has been the financial impact from us not, not getting, and I think I'm right, just the EIA funds?
The base student cost?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The base student cost currently is right at what it was in 2008.
Ten years ago?
Correct.
Okay.
We just got back up to 2008 level of the base student cost. We are about $500 per weighted pupil unit below the state law that sets that. That to us is, even with the EFA reduction, it would probably be in the neighborhood of $15 million a year of additional state funding if the base student cost was fully funded.
You know, you know what my next question is, right?
Pretty much so.
What, what would we do if we had 15 additional million dollars that the state has told us we were supposed to get? How would that impact?
Well.
Reading intervention, math intervention? We heard some comments earlier about school-to-prison pipeline and making sure we educate our children as best we can. That costs money, right?
I don't set priorities.
Yes, you said that to me last year.
But in relative terms, our increase in our total budget last year was $10 million. So our total increase in our general fund budget last year was $10 million. So an additional $15 million should put that in perspective of what the district could do.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Now, let's see. All right, I, I'm trying to find it. I was looking in the revenue section and I know you have to give some major categories and you can't get into the weeds, but I want to get into the weeds on one particular issue. Where do, what's the line item for funds that have been received from R2I2 in this first quarter as it relates to, after the board voted to allow for the liquor?
Those funds are.
Where's that reflected?
Those funds are reflected in the first page, well, it's the second page if you count the cover page, but it's page one on my, on my section. It's other local revenue. And I don't know whether those revenues would include any, from any R2I2 events that, after the policy was changed, I would have to go look, but that's where those revenues would be reflected.
Okay. What I'm going to ask between now and the second one is that we take, if you can take that out and add that to it, because we want to keep it.
Specific for those revenues.
Yes.
Yes.
And if we can compare it to last year's numbers.
We can do that.
As well, thank you. Now, lastly, and I'm just referencing, I think for you also, it'll be page five of seven, but it's entitled Special Revenue Funds. Those are our grants?
Yes.
Okay. And I, just item 203 IDEA, there was some conversation about, and you may need to get help, you may.
I always need help.
All right. Is it true that the district receives $8,000 to $10,000 per special needs student? Is that true?
I don't think the funding comes specifically per pupil like that. It would depend on the allocation. Obviously, the, my limited understanding is that the degree of disability dictates the amount of resources the district has to allocate to serve that individual special needs. So it, it could be three times that if we have to have a one-to-one or two-to-one person for the, for the, for the student. But in terms of the allocation, we can find out more and update you on that, be glad to.
Okay. And lastly, and this is just a request, in 203, if we could just change that second word to disabled, that would be great, or special needs.
203?
Yeah. We kind of don't use that word anymore.
I believe that's the.
We don't use that word anymore.
That may even be the funding title, we'll check.
We don't have to accept that though, right? We can label it whatever we want to.
Okay.
That would be my suggestion. We try not to use that word anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Any other questions? If not, thank you, Dr. Miley.
Thank you.
For updating us.
Thank you.
And at this time, we'll move on to item 13, specifically 13.1, Certification of Delegates for 2018 Delegate Assembly. I know that a couple of board members, we have, when we attend our delegate assembly in December, each school board across the state has a different number of voting delegates. We have, we have nine votes and we typically spread those vote, those nine votes out over three school board members. I know two school board members have expressed an interest in attending as delegates in December. Is there any other board member who's interested in serving as a delegate in December? Dr. Caution Parker, I know, Mr. Shad? No, if not, we can do two board members and split the votes up five to four. Is there someone who'd be willing to serve as an alternate? We need an alternate. We can get by with two delegates, but we need an alternate. Is there anyone who'd be willing to serve as an alternate in case something happens with the?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning?
I think it's default.
Okay.
Since everybody else stepped back, I'll step up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manning. So is there someone who would be willing to make a motion that Dr. Caution Parker, Mr. Shad and Mr. Manning, as an alternate, serve as voting delegates for the 2018 Delegate Assembly for the South Carolina School Boards Association?
Madam Chair?
Dr. Elkins Johnson?
I'd like to make a motion that Mr. Shad, Dr. Caution's Parker and Mr. Manning serve as alternate for the delegates for 2018 Delegate, Delegate Assembly.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Is there a second?
Second?
Thank you, Mrs. Augustine. Is there any discussion at this time? If not, we shall cast our votes.
Madam Chair, my iPad's acting full, so I can't vote.
Let's just do it, we can do a hand vote then. Uh, the second?
Sorry to be the problem child.
All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. And our hands are raised. Okay. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion unanimously carries. Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to item 13.2. Let me, yeah, let me get my screen to catch up. Bond referendum result declaration. And we'll receive, we'll receive a motion that this, the recommendation is to designate the following. My screen's jumping around, y'all bear with me, my screen is, I'm pressing one thing and it's, another is popping up. Bear with me for just a sec because we've moved beyond voting delegates, haven't we? Bear with me for just a moment. I'm pressing 13.2, but 13, 13.1 is popping up. What should I do? Okay, now I'm good. Okay. Okay, let me speak quickly before the screen moves again. Item 13.2, Bond Referendum Result Declaration. And we'll entertain a motion and just a motion, but the recommendation is to adopt the resolution declaring the results of the referendum held on November 6, 2018 on the questions of the issuance. I'm out again.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that the board accept the certified copy of resolution declaring the results of a referendum and for the board secretary to sign and execute the acceptance of the certified copy.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. The motion has been made by Mr. Manning and properly seconded by Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion at this time? I don't have any discussion, but just a comment, and I wanted to say that I know by an overwhelming 60-something percent, the community has voted for us to move forward with the bond. It wasn't our bond, it was our recommendation and what we're doing by coming to the public is asking for permission to move forward with the bond and to make some much-needed changes and upgrades and with regard to safety and security in the district. And I just want to thank the public for having a vote of confidence in us to move forward in that regard. Is there any further discussion with regard to the bond? Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Just a comment, first of all, I want to say thank you to all of those who voted for the bond and who believe that we're going to be great stewards of the money. One thing that I do want to make notice is when we go out to get those contractors and to get folks to, and to work, I hope we're fair when we're looking at different contractors. I hope we do consider some of our minority and our small business contractors to come in. So I just want to make sure that if the public believed in us and our constituents believed in us, that we need to believe in spreading the love and sharing the love and not be stuck on certain contractors or certain companies, that we're going to open it up and be very fair in the selection of allowing different contractors, different minority businesses to come in, even if it's some new businesses. We all started somewhere. We've all, as an educator, I started as a first-year teacher. So I hope that we give new contractors an opportunity to get involved with Richland too and not be so gung-ho on, this is how we've always done, this is how we've always done it and that's how we're going to continue to do that. So I will be watching carefully at some of the selections that we do when we're looking at our contractors and when we're taking this bond money and only giving it to certain friends or certain contract companies. So just be mindful of that, that not only would I be looking, but the constituents in the community will be looking at that as well.
And I assure that will be, be done and we will include in all our contracts the requirement to hire minority and small business firms throughout the contract. So we will plan on doing that, you have my word. I wanted to also mention that the purpose of this acceptance is there's, it starts officially the 20-day time when they can protest the bond. So we start the clock, thank you for adding it to the agenda tonight because that starts the 20-day clock and once that 20 days is up, we can start moving forward. So I appreciate it very much.
Are there any other questions or concerns with regard to the motion that's on the table? Discussion, I'm sorry.
If you have any questions, our bond counsel, Franny Hazer is here if you have any questions.
Thank you so much. And just to reiterate, I know that we have 100%, I know success rate as to doing what we're supposed to do with the money. And I know there have been, there's been discussion as to the, the process of, of selecting contractors and things of that nature to make sure that we have a diverse population. So I trust and feel confident that we'll move in that direction because that is important. Thank you so much. Is there any further discussion? If not, we will cast our votes at this time. Thank you, Dr. Miley.
Madam Chair, I have.
Oh, Mr. Manning, I'm sorry.
No, I vote a resounding yes. I still can't vote. Not just yes, a resounding yes, I want to add emphasis.
All those in favor, please indicate so by raising your hand. By a vote of seven to zero, the vote, the motion unanimously carries. Thank you, Dr. Miley.
Thank you.
Next, item 14.1, Agenda Items for Next Meeting. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, the December 11, 2018 Future Agenda Work Session Items, as you know, December, again, we will have one board meeting. And so that board meeting may have additional areas to, to cover, but we will be covering student appeals, DOD requests, we'll have a legislative update, we'll have a school focus from Ridgeview High School, we'll be seeking the approval of policy revisions, EBAB hazardous materials, as well as DEE, energy conservation. In addition, we'll have proposals for policy revisions, EBC, emergencies, ECA, security, E BCE, school closings and cancellations, and then ECAC vandalisms. In addition to that, we'll have proposals for the calendar for the upcoming school year. So it'll be the first reading and presentation of the calendar. A report on a comprehensive annual financial report ending on June 30, 2018. We'll have a report on the data snapshot and school-state report card follow-up from John Arnold, as well as a report on the first quarter discipline report that we promised that we would do a quarterly discipline report for the board. In addition to that, there's one item, additional item that will be added to the executive session items and as contracts for architectural services.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Are there any recommendations or suggestions for a few, this, the next agenda or future board agenda items? And I can't see it, I can't pull the attachment up, so. Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Yes, not for next month, but at least by March. I would like to see Ms. Williams give us a presentation on the Rule Recruitment Initiative.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. And is it something that we could get in a, in an update, in a board brief as well?
No, I would like for the public to be able to see this. So I would love for her to present, so the public can see how we recruit and some of the places that we go and how we use our funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Any additional? Hearing none, we'll move on to item 15. This is our second opportunity for public participation. I don't see where anyone has signed up, so we're going to presume that everyone who has desired to speak has spoken at this time. So we're moving on to item 16, Board and Superintendent Comments. And I'll start on my right this evening. Dr. Holmes?
Good evening. I would like to first of all say thank you to the people that have elected me to serve on the school board. I made a promise to all of you that I would be very transparent and honest and accessible to you and I will absolutely keep that promise to you. I am so excited about serving the community and our students. This is a, this is a love for me. This is what I do. I'm an educator, I'm still an educator. I go to work every day, I have to go to work in the morning. Also, at this time, I would just like to thank everybody on the board for welcoming me. I appreciate you and I thank you very much for that. On a different note, I would like to just say that this is, the work of school board is, is very important. On a different note, I would like to just say that this is, the work of school board is very important. And because, just like today, we lost a student at my school where I'm at today. And things like students being lost, and there was a gun, I believe, in Newberry County today also. So, this kind of work is definitely important because the decisions that we make on this board have direct impact to the students that we serve. And I'm honored and humbled that you have elected me to do so, and I take it seriously, and I would do it with honor and pride. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. Mr. Manning.
Yeah, I'd also like to thank the community for the opportunity to return. I appreciate that vote of support and confidence in the work that I've done and the work that I will continue to do over the next four years, serving on this premier school board with a premier superintendent and the folks around me. So, I appreciate that support. Colonel McLamb, I want to thank the honor guard and the 282nd Army Band acapella solist. Amazing job. Thank you for your service, for all of the veterans that serve this country every day so that we can have the opportunity to provide a quality, high-quality public education for our students and have that opportunity for all. So, again, look forward to the opportunity to serve, and it looks like I got a lot of work ahead of me. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Dr. Caution Parker.
Just want to say thank you to everyone. Glad to be back up here and serve four more years with this fantastic premier district. According to Dr. Davis, a premier word resounds across the district. But I just want to say thank you and thank all of my board members for their phone calls, for the text messages I received, and I couldn't get back to everybody, but thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson, for your support, your supportive comments. But just glad to be back here and with Richland School District, too. And I do want to say congratulations to the award recipients this evening, the Spring Valley presentation, the honor guard, the wonderful program at Round Top Elementary. That is, that is just fantastic. And glad, we have a good evening. It's a long evening, but it's a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. Dr. Elkins Johnson.
As always, just want to say thank you for allowing me the opportunity to serve as well, although I'm not up for reelection, not into 2020. But just want to say thank you for the opportunity to be here. I've been an educator for 29 years, and I'm an advocate for teachers, because I'm a teacher at heart. I'm an advocate for parents and for students. And one thing, I just want to remind parents that be an advocate for your child, because you are your child's first teacher. So, I would just encourage you to get involved with your child's school and come to school board meetings so you can see what we do and how we do it, because decisions that we make go into effect immediately. So, just be an advocate, and thank you to all of my educators, my parents, and colleagues. Have a great night.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Mrs. Agostini.
First of all, I'd like to welcome Dr. Teresa Jones Holmes to the board. Say thank you to my favorite veteran, my husband, and to all of those who have served and continue to serve. Thank you to the Richland 2 voters for supporting both bond referendums. And finally, I want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Craig Plank for his four years of service on the Richland 2 school board. I appreciated his leadership, his mentorship, his commitment to our district and our students, and his friendship. He will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Mr. Shad.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. We've had a lot to talk about, and we have a lot of work to do. And I appreciate the comments that were made during public participation. We are very aware that we are being watched. We are very welcoming for those who want to partner with us. Our arms are outstretched for assistance, and we appreciate the parent participation, the community participation. We want this to go beyond just this meeting. Dr. Elkins Johnson has said for several years, please come to the board meetings. Please come to the board meetings, see what's happening. And through technology, we've got YouTube, and we know that folks are watching there as well. But I always appreciate people having their feet to the ground, and rather than working against, we're, we can lock arms and work together. And as I always say, we always need to make sure that we tell the story. I welcome my good friend, my longtime friend, she was a teenager when I first met her, Dr. Teresa Jones Holmes. We go way back, so I'm very happy that she's here, serving with us. We will endeavor to make sure that you are a part of the family and that we will make sure that we are, continue to be a premier board as we are. We're just adding you to the family. And welcome back to our returning incumbents and my colleagues, our current chair, as well as Dr. Caution Parker. And of course, Mr. Manning, who myself, Mr. Plank and I always compete for having the longest speeches. And so, I appreciate her honor giving me the last word, perhaps. Happy Veterans Day. We just celebrated that, and I want to especially give honor to Private First Class James Shad Jr., who is no longer with us. And so, but to all our veterans, thank you for your service. And it is not unnoticed, and I hope that we continue that and not just be, just Veterans Day once a year. And we had a wonderful time with our student focus and of course, our recognitions. That was always a treat. And I wanted to share, lastly, that I was honored to serve with Mr. Craig Plank for two of my four years, two of his four years. And he is a gentleman, and in true fashion, he will get the last word. He gave us personal notes, and I know he doesn't mind me sharing the one that he gave to me. And it reads, "Jamie, it has been an honor serving with you for the past two years. I have enjoyed getting to know you and appreciate our friendship. I've always been impressed by your fatherhood. Continue to be a strong man of God, a boyfriend to your bride, and a role model to your kids. I'm proud of you. Serve well." Y'all have a good evening.
Tonight is a night with, for graciousness, with the length of time that people speak, and you are no exception.
Only for tonight, right?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Shad. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board, to our parents and our community. I want to say thank you to the Richland 2 employees, parents, students, community, friends, and all of our partners. On November 6, voters passed the bond referendum, giving the district permission to borrow $468 million. The district is excited to begin moving forward quickly to address facility needs in the areas of safety and security, academic learning spaces, transportation, technology, and arts and athletics. The district extends our sincerest appreciation for supporting the referendum. These funds will be spent wisely and in order to complete the projects included in the bond referendum funding plan on time and within budget. Additionally, it is extremely important to our Board of Trustees and to Richland 2 that we are open, inclusive, and diverse in our hiring practices for these building projects. This week, our country celebrates American Education Week. In 1921, a resolution establishing this recognition of public education, the NEA called for a week-long celebration that highlighted accomplishments of the nation's public schools and generated support for meeting the needs of the public education system. We all know that one important need of our system's endeavors is more recognition and appreciation for the hard work of each and every employee of schools and school districts. And I am grateful of quite a few of our local businesses that see the value of our teachers and staff and are saying thank you by offering special discounts for Richland 2 employees with proper ID. Thank you for sharing your gifts and your talents with our students, parents, and community. Happy American Education Week. I would also like to pause and say again, Happy Veterans Day, although we, a couple of days passed, but we had our annual district Veterans Day program here, as well as many around the district. And we can't thank those who have been in service to this country enough, but we appreciate and honor them for all that they've done and all that they have sacrificed for our freedoms that we have here in the United States. The inaugural Richland 2 Order of the Flame Gala was held earlier this month. The first recipients were Anna Love Boyd and Anna Hambury, as well as Dr. John Hudgens and John Moreau and Gwen Smythe. Each of these individuals enhanced the quality of education and represented our district with honor, earning this prestigious recognition from the Richland 2 Education Foundation. And I'll leave you with this remark. I cannot believe Thanksgiving is next week. But that being said, I wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving. And take a moment of time to just simply reflect on all that you're grateful and thankful for. We spend so much of our times in conflict and in battlement and fighting over issues, but it's not often that we spend some time every morning with a gracious heart of the things that we are grateful for, the things that we have been provided, the opportunities that we have to have those spirited debates and discussions. So, when you have gratitude in your heart, I heard someone say earlier this week, it's difficult to have anything else in your heart when gratitude is the first thing that you have. So, let's start out with a gracious heart toward one another and have a happy and prosperous Thanksgiving, and we'll see you when we return. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. As always, I just want to thank the people who are left standing, people who are left in the room. There are some people who have to be here. They typically have microphones in front of them. But those who don't have to be here and are here just because you choose to know what's going on in the district and report back to your families or know of yourself or to our partners, it doesn't go unnoticed. We appreciate that. I apologize that the delay, that the hour is late. But I will say, this is my first time since under my tenure as board chair that we have not started at 6:30 and on time, so, yeah, I apologize for that. But when we have student matters, we do try to prioritize them and take the time and give them the attention that they need. The wonderful thing about going last is that everything has been said. Dr. Holmes, welcome. And the conversation we had earlier stands, stands. Thank Mr. Plank for his service and passion and commitment to the board. All the presentations we've had, ditto, ditto. I echo my colleagues' comments. I will say one thing, though, because I am here. With regard to gratitude, thank you. Respect is not something that's demanded. It's earned. Support is not something to be expected. It is earned. There may be some people who disagree with me when people owe them money or favors, but nobody owes you anything in life. You know, like I said, if they owe you money, you may feel differently or owe you some favors. People may feel different, but nobody owes you anything in life. The courtesies and the niceties and the respect that people give you is something that's earned. So, for everyone who supported me to get me back here on the board, I appreciate that. And for those who didn't, I still represent you. And I'll make sure that I have the best interest of our 28,000-plus students who are the end users of our product. So, not focusing on anything beside me or behind me, but looking forward to the students that we are here to advocate for. Thank you. Bless you. No one had to do that, and I'm absolutely humbled, and I appreciate that. With regard to Veterans Day, I just want to say one thing. I met Alice Walker yesterday. How cool was that? We were so fast, I was thinking about you. You did, too. How about that? As we talk, I was, we think about Veterans Day and the freedoms that we have. I mean, literally, our freedom, but freedom entails so much more. It entails liberties, liberties that we take for granted, like being educated, like being able to read a book if you want to or have freedom of religion. And so, for one of those liberties of reading and education, I'm just very thankful. And it was this very, it was a very timely to have her here yesterday to celebrate literacy, which is one of the liberties that we have in our country. So, without further ado, we will move on to item 17.1, and we still have some business to attend to, so we will entertain a motion at this time to enter into our second executive session.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I move to recess public session and convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of student appeals and student admission requests to the, into the district's adult education program.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. I heard her first. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will cast our votes to move into executive session. I don't think we have to do that, but we can do it with your hand. I think it's going to be unanimous, because we've got to do it. And in our defense, the reason that we're having an executive session is we didn't want to, we wanted to be as respectful as we could of your time. We could have stayed back there 30 more minutes and finished this, but we did want to be uncourteous to your time, so that's why we're going back. All right.